Welcome one, welcome all. Mr. Lahey, can you get us going? District improvement program.
Good morning, Mayor and members of council. As you know, we've had a lot of success in the Vibe District with incubating and starting new businesses down there. And as a result of that, we're looking to expand that to other districts in the city. And Taylor Adams, Director of Economic Development is going to tell you a little bit about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lahey. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. That's an almost perfect summary of what we're going to do. This is an expansion of the Vibe Matching Grant Program, very similar in structure to what we've done there. This program is to incentivize and induce capital investment consistent with adopted district goals. And we'll talk about what those adopted district goals are and how we will propose those in just a moment. There's a $100,000 appropriation currently within the Economic Development operating budget to deliver this program. However, we didn't want to dive into this until we had a better understanding of what it is we were doing and had some framework to put around it. So before I go any further, I do want to thank Kathy Warren and the team at SGA for their help in pulling this program together. Districts under this program can be anywhere in the city. And so again, this is a citywide expansion of the Vibe Program. District applicants, the plan will be that they'll work with Economic Development and SGA to define the program. That program will then inform us as to what the application should look like for that defined district. So we want to stay out of the business of being overly prescriptive and recognizing that one, that there's a one-size-fits-all program for an application that might come out of Kempsville versus one that might come out of Punggol versus one that might come out of the Vibe District that's, of course, already established. So we want to make sure that the organizations that are defining the districts are helping us to define the goals. And then, district examples can include, but they won't necessarily be limited to, a few things that we've listed here just for context. Not-for-profits, civic leagues, community associations, and then business associations that might represent a specific area or center of the city. Eligibility, we're talking about businesses with less than 50 employees, so true small businesses. We're requiring that all of their local licenses, fees, and taxes be current, and obviously they must be, the applicant must be within an approved district. And eligible uses, just again, to put a little more context behind that as it stands today, chain businesses with more than three locations, national franchises, places of worship, and then residential buildings. We want this to be for truly commercial activities within the city. Qualifying improvements, you'll see here a list. I won't necessarily read this to you, but the idea with the list is, we wanted to focus specifically on, because these are micro grants, we wanted to focus specifically on quantifiable improvements to the property, something that we hope will produce a quantifiable lift in basically the real estate tax and fees that we would collect. And so you can see building improvements, modernization, technology upgrades, exterior improvements. As we go through these, these are very similar to what you saw in the Vibe Grants. And so just for context, the Vibe Program, through two appropriations from this body, was working with $75,000. That generated, now if you talk to the Vibe folks, they'll give you a much larger number, but actually quantifiable capital investment that we can find was just less than half a million dollars. So about a four and a half to one ratio of private to public investment out of that program. We're looking for the same type of impact, but citywide. Parameters, there we go, grant parameters. So again, we've got the current year funding of $100,000. It's currently in my operating budget. These are for requests between $1,000 and $10,000. And again, it cannot be for the, the applicant has to also be bringing with them other capital investment in the property. This cannot be the only investment in the property. One grant per business per year, maximum. And so that's not, the reason we wrote it this way is, you'll see down at the bottom, well, on a future slide, that basically you've got, that the applicant has six months to work through this with one possible extension on that work. We want a single piece of work to be completed before we consider another application from any one property owner. We recognize that there may be an expansion opportunities if there's a future appropriation, but it's important that we limit the activity in any one period to one grant per business per year on a first-come, first-served basis. Important to note, these are not entitlements. And we'll talk about the application and review program and process that we're proposing in just a moment. And like anything that we try to bring with you, must allow for full audit of records by us of anything that's submitted. And that'll get into the performance basis for these grants in just a moment. The selection process. We're proposing that applications are submitted to Economic Development. This makes sense just because we're accustomed to catching, to receiving grants like the Economic Development Investment Plan and so on and so forth. My team is accustomed to receiving these requests. We propose that they will be reviewed by a Grant Review Committee, DRC as we're calling it. And we think that that is a body that meets quarterly. However, that said, that is just a proposed schedule at this point. We don't know what the activity will be on this, so it could be that that body initially would meet more frequently, but then if there's not enough activity, it might, quarterly meetings might not be required. But we feel like, from what we see in the community, that quarterly meetings make sense. The Grant Review Committee will evaluate and make recommendations. Important to note, we are not proposing that the Grant Review Committee make the approval. We recommend that they review, put a package together, and that a resolution be presented for approval and then payment subsequently. We think the Grant Review, at a minimum, should consist of a City Council Representative or Representatives, we were asking for your guidance there, a City Manager, Deputy City Manager, or their designee, the Economic Development Director or designee, and then the Planning Director or his designee. And this is at a minimum, and obviously this can be expanded or contracted, but this is our recommended structure as we stand today. As it relates to distribution of the grant proceeds, funds we propose would only be demonstrated after demonstrated performance. This is important to us. We think it's important that all of these grants are issued on a performance basis. And so to receive the money, someone will have to demonstrate that this work, as well as the work that we are matching, has been completed. Reimbursement requests would be submitted to Economic Development so that we can do an initial scoring of them and evaluation to make sure that that's met. Those would then be forwarded to the Grant Review Committee. And then after the Grant Review Committee had certified that work, we would route a payment voucher for approval, basically docketed approval. We believe that improvement should be completed within six months, and we're allowing for the, just understanding it's the nature of construction, one extension, a request for one extension, but we want to note that that one extension is not a guarantee at that point. I mean, that is truly a request. As it relates to next steps, one thing we want to mention, so as these are grants, similar to what you did with the Vibe, a request that we would make is that an ordinance transferring this money from my budget to the Development Authority be forwarded to you. And this is simply because in talking with both staff and representation in the City Attorney's Office, it seems to be the only way to efficiently do this, because we don't have another not-for-profit in the community that can service the conduit. Also, it's important to note, in the Vibe Program, originally we started with a not-for-profit and for a couple of reasons around the administration of that grant, we ended up, that money ended up being transferred to the authority so that it could be managed by staff and routed that way. And so that, the reason that when, earlier when I spoke of routed for approvals, we didn't name the sources, and I did not want to get ahead of you, this is just as we have worked on this over the past few weeks, this seems to be the way forward, and we would hopefully receive your, at least a nod of the heads to prepare that ordinance coming out of the questions here today. But then pending your approval, after that, we would, my staff would begin outreach to potential districts to hopefully start routing these requests through. That is the program as we have it today, and I would welcome your questions.
John?
Did your ROI include the $2 million of general fund revenue that was spent in the CIP two budgets back for improvements in the Vibe District? Did it include that?
No, sir, it did not.
Could you please provide the background of what costs went into determining our payments? Will you know what costs were included for that ROI?
Yes, sir, I will. So for us on the ROI, I can tell you, it was specifically the $75,000, the 50 that was first appropriated, and the 25 that followed that, and the matches that were against that, but we'll pull the rest of that together for you.
I remember this discussion way back when, when we talked about how come it's just the Vibe, how come we're not operating these across the city? And one of the issues was, how come it's just districts? And so it shouldn't just be SGA's either. So I'm very interested, what initiatives and what is the prerequisite the council would have to make to create additional districts that would be qualifying, and what is that process? Because who knows, the SGA's may not survive the comprehensive plan review. So I'm just interested on how we can make sure that just because you're at a little designated area, I think no matter where you are in the city, if you're a small business, or something, you should be able to qualify for one of these grants, and not just because you have the good fortune to be involved in some predestined district. I know there's some legal issues, but I know where there's a will, there's a way, so I'm interested how we can expand what constitutes a district and the process by which we would do that.
And so, Councilmember, that is our intent. I agree with you on that, and that's why we've left definition of the district somewhat open. We believe that a group of businesses, a community association, a civic league, should not necessarily be bound by an SGA or even a suburban sort of growth area. We think that this should be a citywide program. Yes, sir?
I want to follow up on John's comment. So curiosity, kind of a hypothetical, and I understand you might not have the answer. So in Kempsville particularly, there seem to be a lot of struggling shopping centers. Could something like this be overlaid in a shopping center that is in need of rehabilitation, for lack of a better word?
So without telegraphing my hand and getting ahead of this body, when we say business associations, that's exactly sort of where we're, yeah, we need, and so...
It intended to be for, yes.
Yes.
The answer is yes. Commercial corridors, a shopping center could describe themselves as a district, establish the vision, goals to match the vision, the application will match the goals.
If I could add a few more questions?
Yes, John.
Will the grant parameters be that the employment, the average employment would match or exceed the current average hourly wage in the city? Obviously, for subsidizing things, there's no need to be subsidized in low-wage industries, but is the wage that's being paid by the business a factor in the grant application process?
So that is not something we have contemplated today. We were focused purely on capital investment. Yes, sir?
Well...
What often happens in redevelopment scenarios for the commercial corridors or existing buildings like we've seen in the more urban settings of some of the historic areas is, you find that the micro-business has a challenge with meeting our building codes on exits, on bathrooms, on some of the facade improvements. And so that's where this program slots in. It's not meant to be a job creator, it's meant to be an assistance in increasing the use and value of the capital asset.
But it certainly is using taxpayers' money, and if we're granting some kind of incentive to someone who's in a business, we certainly have every right to establish the criteria we think that's important, and human capital is part of the capital of a business, I think. But that gets back to my other point. When you look at the things you just mentioned, I don't know who's done the improvements at your home lately, you don't do much for $1,000, and if you're talking about doing a bathroom or a couple of things, you've run out of your money. So I would be surprised, I'd be interested to see the business case, would this make a critical difference? And without it, the private capital wouldn't happen. I suspect in this particular case, these small amounts, the capital investment would take place independent of the grant we grant, and therefore the grant really isn't driving capital investment of all, it's just reducing the cost that would otherwise take place. But I might be corrected, but I don't think those monies actually will drive capital investment on a $10,000 grant.
I don't have data on that. Yes, sir.
Read Walfrid's journal, I think you'd be surprised. I look at construction costs, I just don't think it's a driver. And the resolution, we should go back a slide, who is approving that resolution? It said resolution would be approved, but didn't say who was approving that.
And that is where we are proposing with this sort of a nod of the head, here to prepare an ordinance where this would route through the VBDA.
Well, I think that we're going to say that, that should just be upfront and honest, a resolution.
Oh, yes, sir.
I don't agree with that, but at least it would be upfront, you don't have to guess what it means. And could you go back to the other slide that talks, because I know this is a discussion, you said we didn't have a ready nonprofit to allocate the grant, understand that, but does that mean that the city legally couldn't directly provide the grant?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, just, I just want that to be clear for the record.
City grant authorities pretty limited to nonprofits that provide services within the city or to VBDA, but not to for-profits. That is something within purview of the VBDA only.
Because I do remember when, back when, the council didn't delegate all the economic incentive money to the Development Authority upfront, they would approve something, but then the actual appropriation came back to us, and we appropriated on a by-case basis. This is too much a smaller program for that, for the overhead. But I do think, when we've seen some of the performance of the Economic Development Department, it hasn't been stellar, to say the least, in terms of grants. And so we can't act like we don't operate under some cloud of mistrust of how those grants are handled. So I'd be interested to see, at least before they vote on them, that we, council, would see what they're going to be voting on, so that we could express our opinion to the people that we appoint as to what we think. Because currently, you know, we get held responsible for it no matter what. I don't care who does it, we get held responsible for it.
And I'll just, and thank you for that, Councilmember. We're happy to provide reporting on the requests that we receive, and we can put those in your packet before they're reviewed by the Grant Review Committee.
And I would be interested, when you're out there talking to the clientele who we think we're helping...
Yes, sir.
...whether or not the grant spectrum is really a factor in their decision-making. Because if our idea is to influence decisions, then the economic calculus has to be, even if we gave fewer grants for more money, it's better than you spread it so thin that you got the peanut butter on a bigger piece of bread. Everybody got a little bit, but you didn't drive any effect. So I'd be interested in understanding, is the proposal guidelines really going to drive an effect or just be a substitute for private capital?
So we're happy to gather that data. I mean, certainly what we have heard from businesses in the Vibe is that it was meaningful in the micro-small space. That said, though, we'll gather more data for you.
In the Vibe, we found a lot of sole proprietors. They were, for example, two businesses launched out of the 1701 co-work space down the street, took vacant properties, and that $10,000 meant a lot to them.
But in the Vibe District, there's waiver for fees, there's real estate tax rebates, none of which I see here.
That is correct.
I just want to make sure that people know it's not the very same.
They found that this program was more effective than some of those, actually.
All right, thank you.
Barbara, then Jess.
Well, you know, I understand that you're just beginning this concept, so there are a lot of unanswered questions at this point that you've got to come back to us with, I suppose.
Yes, ma'am.
But the question about, you know, if we're doing this within a district and how, I guess you're looking at creating potential districts...
That's correct.
...so all of that is yet to be done. But that question, and I guess if we're talking about capital improvements, the question about doing something in a shopping center, we're talking about the owner owning the property, is that correct?
That is correct.
And not leasing it.
That is correct.
So that really wouldn't apply necessarily to shopping centers if somebody is just a shopping center.
So our draft does allow for tenant improvements, because we see that the tenant improvement creates the lift in the real estate tax or the real estate value, whether it's the owner or the lessee that does it. And so it was our intent that both would be eligible, because again, the impact to the city and to basically the tax rule was the same.
The criteria we had for the Vibe, and most of the applicants were tenants, but we always had that the owner had to be a co-applicant, and that the improvement had to go into the capital asset. So that perhaps the operation may or may not stay long-term, but the capital improvement stayed long-term in the property.
Probably a high mortality rate for small businesses, so you really...
There is, and that's why we've...
You're not sure you're giving your money.
And that's why we've tried to tie this to a quantifiable improvement to the real estate itself. And like Ron was saying, and so, I agree, the business may not make it, but if at the end you have a piece of real estate that is easier to lease the second time it is improved, our grant has still served the effect that we intended.
Just so that improvement doesn't cause the rent to be raised.
Well, and it may. I can tell you, there's a business in the Vibe right now who participated in this program, a micro-grant, takedown, the takedown of that property was started, this has been reported to me as recently as last week, was acquired for $200,000, but the improvements have been reassessed at right at a million. And so, I mean, I would tell you, that one absolutely worked. They're not all going to work that way, though, and this is an owner situation, but I will tell you, you're right, if we focus on the capital investment, there's an opportunity to create a meaningful impact. And it's important to note that this is just a piece of the capital investment. It is to basically induce a higher investment, which is what we saw in the Vibe.
A lot of challenges, but...
Yes, ma'am.
Good contract.
Thank you.
Jess, then Guy.
I wanted to go back to talking about how this is different from what we're doing in the Vibe. Can you explain why we aren't just carbon copying what we're doing in the Vibe and giving them the same exact program versus just doing a capital, I guess, a capital improvement?
So, simplest form, a lot of the Vibe incentives just weren't used, I mean to...
First, so if you're talking about the Vibe District whole package of incentives, that's established and authorized by state code. That you can create creative arts districts and provide those. We don't have the same benefit to be able to sprinkle around the city. And so when we heard your request last year to expand the program, and so that's what we're doing with the way it was currently running, this was the most survived benefit of, so that is within, completely within your purview to authorize.
Well, okay, let me rephrase my question. What, in addition to this, can we do that we're doing in the Vibe that we have jurisdiction to do?
So it'd be hard to speak, and it's because we tried to be, so to Ron's point, the Vibe District was a creative arts district. So that's not what we're looking at here. I mean, this was an attempt to expand this program citywide. And so we've stopped short of defining what, putting in a hard definition of what a district is, because we wanted a group of business owners in Kempsville to have the ability to define a district which may not look anything like the Vibe. It might, but it might not. And so the thing is, without a hard definition of what a district's going to be, it's hard to know what other programs we might have thought.
So just to reiterate, this is a replica of the Vibe Creative District Program that was established with the Matching Grant seed money. The only variable is that each community or area or district or commercial corridor gets to establish a vision for what they want. It may not be the same, and so the criteria that you're looking for, like the heart of the Vibe Creative District Matching Grant Program was that it was to incentivize creative businesses.
I'm going to, so I'm trying to, so with the Vibe, and I realize that this is a lot of different components, there's a CIP down there that's helping fund the improvements, is that same mechanism available to a group of business owners that gets together, gets a district qualified, and says, okay, we have this rundown shopping center, we want to put it all in, we want to pull off this asphalt, we want to make it this experience like the Vibe. How is it different, what could they get different from what the Vibe can get? Or maybe that's something we need to explore more, I'm just curious.
If you're talking about targeted and infrastructure investment, you know, from a strategic partnership and area-focused, then that's a council's purview to give direction to management. If you're talking about tax abatement, business licensing, things of that nature, that is something that we would have to look at. Where do we have authority to replicate that in other areas of the city, and what authority do you have under state code that would match that? For example, there are redevelopment areas, there are conservation areas, there are other mechanisms of state code that provide you the ability to do other things, to assist with redevelopment and businesses, but there are very few that are that clean, hey, this is a district that has this special program to do a special thing. The arts districts were considered very much a trend over the past five to 10 years nationwide, and so the Commonwealth responded to that. But if we're looking to get creative and to look at tax abatement and business fee licensing and things of that nature, we would have to work with the Attorney's Office to look at some, a framework, some skeleton of what we could lift and apply across the city.
I just want to get to a place where we can try to make what's happening at the Vibe as equitable across the city as possible.
So coming back to what we're proposing here, the most successful program in the Vibe were the Matching Grants. We've lifted that program and are now trying to take it citywide, with leaving open sort of how we tightly define a vibe. To Ron's point, what we're not doing, for example, is we're not proposing a 10-year freezing of an assessment. We're not proposing the other pieces that have been used sparingly, but used just sparingly. We're taking the most successful piece of the Vibe, the thing that created the most activity, which was the Matching Grant Program, and we're now trying to take that citywide. But no other piece is included in this as it's proposed today.
Thank you.
Guy, and then Michael, and then Sabrina.
I like the looks of this program. I had the same concern, I suppose, as Councilman Moss did about the size of the, is there anything, this is in the current budget, this $100,000?
It is within my operating budget, yes, sir.
Your operating budget. I just, the amount of bureaucracy that's required to administer it is significant, it seems, for $100,000. What's your thoughts about building on this, assuming it continues to find success?
So, yes, I mean, but that's the answer. We need to prove that we can broaden the scope of this program beyond the Vibe where it's had this effect before. I think I'm willing to commit us to a recurrent request for funding here. But I do think that if we produce the same type of impact, recognizing I've got some data to gather, but if we produce the same type of impact citywide that we have produced in the Vibe with the Matching Grant Program, and certainly we have a case that we can build on for future activity. Important to note, $75,000 total, or $75,000 was spent in the Vibe alone, this is $100,000 citywide, and sort of predicting that this will go quickly. But what's good, and once, as it goes quickly, we'll then have the opportunity to measure performance against it, hopefully in more than one place, and get an idea for what the future of this program might look like.
Yeah, maybe two places.
Maybe two, that's right.
Beyond that, I'm not sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Michael.
It sounds to me like there was a conversation prior to when I joined council that related to discussions about the Vibe and that there was a request to create more equity among businesses within our city and also different parts of our city. Would you say that's a fair understanding?
I mean, that predates me as well, in the role I'm in now, Councilman, but yes, sir, that is an accurate statement, as I understand it.
And so just for, I want to go back to that discussion in a moment, but before I do, I wonder if you could tell me, when you talk about the district improvement programs, one component of this is that districts would be identified first by stakeholders or business owners, correct? And so it could be a Kempsville district, or a particular area of Kempsville could be a district. It would be self-selecting, is that correct?
That's right, but we would ask that the association, that the group seeking to define a district, work with my office and with SGA, so that we can basically put parameters on that that would be consistent with sort of good public policy.
Thank you. So going back to the discussion about the Vibe, and one thing I haven't heard yet, and so please forgive me if it came up in previous discussions, but Councilmember Moss mentioned the point of this would be to create an effect within a district. And one of the virtues of the model that was used for Vibe, that I don't think got enough credit in the discussion we had here today, is that there was a concentrated investment in a specific geographic area, and so that there would, you know, activity bred activity, and that that's part of the, arguably, that's part of the virtue of a district, of creative district, and that's why they've been successful in Virginia Beach, and Norfolk, and Alexandria, and other places throughout our Commonwealth and throughout the country. Would you say that's correct?
Yes, sir, I think that's...
So as we think about creating an effect, I just want to... So, as we think about creating an effect, I just want to urge council and also your office to, you know, keep that focus that, you know, there is merit to, in making a concentrated investment into specific districts. And I wouldn't want to sprinkle a little bit here, and sprinkle a little bit there, and sprinkle a little bit there, and it doesn't have any effect at all, as Councilmember Moss said.
Yes, thank you.
And Sabrina.
So, I'm, I'm just reminded by your presentation that November 15th through December 15th is how we're celebrating and recognizing local business. The council approved that resolution. And so, I think that it's wonderful that we have this presentation that helps us look at, you know, how we can help local business. Because I can tell you, many times I hear from business owners who ask me, you know, what are we doing for sustainability of businesses? You know, what are we doing to help businesses grow? And so, I think this is a good step in the right direction. I think this is something that we should be looking at. And I understand that what you're saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is to give you the opportunity to move forward to see if it's a viable thing to do-
That's right.
-across the city. And I hope that we can do that.
Thank you, councilmember.
Yes. And my only, my question is, focused on outreach, how will you, what are some of the options to do outreach for this type of program?
So, so, the big thing is, obviously, we, we don't, we don't want to get ahead of council action, which is, there, there's an, there's an action that we would have to request to transfer, to transfer some money to the authority, but assuming that that were to move forward. This is really something that flows through sort of our small business team, because when you, when you think about this program, there is, one of the, one of the reasons that this is important to me is, we often see that there is a business that's really too small to meaningfully compete or meaningfully apply for an EDIP, just because there's some structure that is required to even just sort of get in the door there. And, and because Councilman Towers, Towers' point from, from a moment ago, we're generally accustomed to making a larger award there, and we want quite a bit more. We've just updated the EDIP policy to actually increase our ability to sort of be vigilant in monitoring and auditing the work that we're doing there. And so, as these are, this program is really targeted at the smallest businesses in our community. People that are, folks that are really just getting started, single business, you see, we've really limited this to small businesses and to non-franchises and things of that nature. So, yes, this will flow through the team that Jeff Smith leads currently. We'll, we'll also work with, with the team in, with Laverre Tolentino and Keith Lee in purchasing to reach out to, to the SWAM network as they define it. Also, I think there's a great opportunity here, as we're expanding this citywide, to look at folks that are both doing, that are looking to do business in our, in our city and with it. And so, obviously, there'd be no promise of that, but there's an opportunity to fully leverage the network of, of small and micro-small SWAMs that we, that we interact with daily here.
And might I just add that small business is the lifeblood of our city. And if this program is geared to help those businesses thrive, that is an excellent step in the right direction. And might I also add that recently, in the State of the Union address, in, in their statistics, they talked about small businesses being very important and very key to the success of businesses in local cities. And they specifically said, if small businesses aren't thriving, growing, and starting in your city, then your future looks cloudy. So, I really think this is something that we should move forward on.
Thank you, councilman.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. Good move forward.
All right, so, Mayor and members of council, if you please, I'd like to invite Karen Porchillo, Housing Development Administrator from our Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation. She's going to give a public presentation on the, a property, a proposed property sale in Burton Station for a senior development called Tranquility at the Lakes.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. This presentation is a briefing on a proposal by Seniors Unlimited Lifestyle to purchase city-owned property. Many of you may be familiar with the Tranquility at the Lakes property. This project was in Burton Station, and you may have attended the opening in March of 2017. This facility is a three-story, 40-unit affordable senior and disabled housing complex. All 40 units are occupied, and there's actually a waiting list for 112 individuals. The developer, Seniors Unlimited Lifestyle, is founded by Angela Whitehead and is a nonprofit 501(c)(3). The owners of the facility, SUL Tranquility Lakes, is a partnership. The property itself is located at the Burton Station Village, which is part of the Burton Station SGA Master Plan, which was updated in 2018. This facility anchors the corner of Burton Station and Tolliver Roads, creating an attractive urban streets presence while amating the demand for affordable multifamily housing. SUL delivered by purchasing two parcels for this development. The first parcel was purchased for $705,000 in 2015, and the second parcel was purchased in 2016 for $30,000. If you're looking at an aerial view showing the tranquility, existing tranquility at the lakes, you'll see it outlined in red on that aerial view. And then, the proposed project is in yellow. The purple lines indicate Burton Station and Tolliver Road. Our Departments of Housing's 2017 Housing Needs Assessment identified a lack of affordable housing. And the statistics from the American Community Survey show 61% of seniors 65 and older are rent burdened, which equates to about 3,939 seniors. And in addition, 8,864 senior households have a household income of less than $30,000 a year. Seniors Unlimited proposal to purchase the excess city properties and create affordable senior housing would increase the number of units available in the city. A sale option from the city would be contingent on obtaining financing decisions by July of 2020. And if council approves the sale, our Department of Housing would coordinate with Seniors Unlimited and provide financing to make the project possible. As we zoom in for a closer look, you can see again, the look of the tranquility in, outlined in red, that's the existing, the proposed properties, the five properties outlined in yellow, and Tolliver Road bisecting the two. The five assembled city-owned properties are shown in yellow on the slide. You can see that. And the property outlined in blue on the right side of Tolliver Road is the existing Seniors Unlimited Tranquility at the Lakes project. The chart outlines the combined city properties by square footage, value of the property, and a cost by per square foot. A breakdown of each of the five properties is located at the end of the presentation in your packets. So, we break down each of those five individual properties there. Reviewing the chart, you can see in the first column, the five individual properties totaling 85,618 square feet were purchased during 2012 and 2013 for $459,000, or $5.36 a square foot. In the second column, the city assessed value of $173,900 was for the year 1920, and that was for unassembled and estimated to account for the right-of-way for Burton Station and Tolliver Roads. This total square footage is 65,147 square feet, or a total of $2.67 a square foot. The third column, the five properties assembled that were appraised in October of 2018, is for $715,000, or $10.98 a square foot. That's shown for assembled properties, not individual properties. As we look at this proposal, it will help to relieve a demand for affordable senior housing. Seniors Unlimited Lifestyle has worked with city staff to ensure compatibility with the housing programs and consistency with the master plan for Burton Station. With their first Tranquility at the Lakes facility, they have shown to be a good neighbor and want to spur positive development for the community. So, let's recap that proposal. Seniors Unlimited would purchase the five excess city-owned properties across Tolliver Road from their initial project for $715,000. A sale option from the city would be contingent on obtaining complete financing decisions by July of 2020. If council approves the sale, the Department of Housing would coordinate with the developer and provide financing through federal funds to help make the project possible. The recommendation, of course, would be to sell the excess city-owned properties for development at the appraisal of $715,000 for a complimentary senior housing facility. Seniors Unlimited is agreeable paying the appraised value. Staff would then return to city council with a formal proposal in December. Any questions?
Okay, questions, John?
Yes, sir.
On the federal grant, how long would the people who are buying this property be obligated to use that property for the current use? Is it in perpetuity?
It would, it would actually depend on the negotiations that we have.
The reason why I'm asking is, if we're getting $750,000, which sounds like a lot of money, but it isn't as much as you'd think.
No.
And we don't have any guarantee that after they paid off their mortgage and got their 9% credit and basically got all their interest costs involved, and recouped their money, that they decide, this is happening in California, so I'm not mentioning this hypothetically, they no longer want to be in this business. They've met their grant proposal, they now have, now the property has a higher and better use, and they sell it. So, in reality, we didn't get a long-term, sustainable source of affordable housing. So, I'm only asking, did we ever give thought that asking less money, but getting a stronger legal commitment relative to that it's a long-term source of senior housing, and not just looking at the, I'm solving my problem today, we won't be here when that happens, but some of them will be, and say, well, why didn't we look at that? So, I'd like to know, under any federal, there's different grants will make this affordable, what obligations do they have and for what duration to provide the service?
I know Andy can speak as well on this, but we have had several contracts in the past where we provide a contract with a stipulation of the number of years for, to have those affordable housing units.
I just, I just would like just to know, it isn't just about the money, it's like public lands and parks, you know? You only get a chance to own them once, and once you sell it, $750,000, that might be cheap relative to a lesser price and a longer-term obligation to serve our citizens. Because the aging peak pop, 65,000, well, 10,000 people are turning 65 every year, and the bulk of them are principally relying upon social security. So, this isn't an issue that is going away. I, maybe we could just be a little bit, maybe more creative and understand, but I certainly wouldn't want to think that we sold something for $750,000, that if we consciously knew 10 years from now, or 15 years, or 20 years from now, that there's no obligation of those people to continue that service. And if we did, we consciously understood it and said yes.
So, Mr. Rose, let me add to what Karen said. We would, the minimum we would ask is 30 years, but with council's direction, as long as it's consistent with the other sources of financing, because those are the main sources besides our, we could ask for a longer term and make sure that, because I agree, we should have it as long as possible.
I understand everything's got to be executable in the real market, I'm the first person that would acknowledge that. And, and because we don't understand all the parameters of the federal thing, but also, we, we also have something of value we're trading, and sometimes you can trade, the dollars might be worth the time. You, you have to present the options, I'm not saying what they are, I just want to make sure that they're being considered.
Thank you, we'll do that.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eric, how much are these affordable housing for the seniors are going towards those who are disabled?
They had, I believe, there was a 50%, so that they could have for seniors and/or disabled.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anybody else? Rosemary.
Is there an age for the, for the disabled?
There, there was no age for the disabled that I was aware of. And I don't think-
It could be a disabled child, or?
Well, I, I think that a child would be different, it would have to define that age, it would have to be an adult. I mean, a child would be different than being in a senior's facility.
It was, you know, like a grandmother who had a disabled child.
Yes.
Or, you know, I mean, grandmothers can be-
Yes, yes.
-50, not necessarily 65.
Yes.
Correct.
I mean, I, I know of a situation where a lady's trying to find housing, and she has a-
A disabled child with her, so.
She's having her disabled grandchild.
And we can certainly look into that with Angela.
I'm just curious.
Mm-hmm.
Louis?
Well, the, the, the unit that has, that has already been built there in, in Burton Station is probably one of the most popular and well-received projects that we have participated in, that I can remember. When we went to the groundbreaking, as well as the ribbon-cutting of, of the, of the first unit, there were a good 250 people there.
Wow.
And these were all people who had some connection in previous years to, to the previous Burton Station. And they, they were so happy, the people who were moving back into this particular facility were so happy that they were coming home, so to speak. And I, I, you know, I can't think of another project that I personally think, that gave me personal satisfaction, that we did something for the community in this project. And I think expanding it is something that we definitely should be doing. And I, you know, I take my hat off to Angela Whitehead for the, her tenacity in, in moving forward and making this happen, because she is a very aggressive, yet very nice lady who really, whose heart is really in this project. So, I'm certainly in favor of it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Miss Alay.
Mayor and members of council, take a few minutes to change out. We'll bring Public Works and Mark Johnson, Phil Cutter from the Stormwater Group in, and we'll have a in-depth presentation on stormwater operation and maintenance. Start off with Mark Johnson, our Director of Public Works.
Okay, Vice Mayor Wood, councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to be here. This is the second in a series of stormwater presentations Public Works is going to present to you. This one is associated with stormwater maintenance. We just want to give you a little more detail than what we did at the last presentation. It's going to be a tag-team event between myself and Philip Cutter. He's going to talk more about the, the specific program itself, I'm going to give an overview. But also, with us today, I've got Cheryl Cole from Public Works Operations. She's the stormwater engineer. She's got the operations engineering group, which is run by Mark Jones right there, pretty much, they run the CIPs. And she has the, I'll call it the, 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 the maintenance group, the truck shovels, men and women that you see running throughout the city. Cheryl's responsible for all that. I'm going to cover the first two topics, stormwater maintenance and accomplishments. Philip Cutter will take care of the remaining. Quickly, you saw the, this pie chart through the budget briefs of FY '19. We're proposing a $55 million stormwater CIP, of which, moving clockwise around the pie, flood control represents 45%. And that's basically due to the, the six-year fee increases city council approved, starting this year. Stormwater regulatory and water quality receives 16%, and operations and maintenance receives 39%. Now, as a reminder, and we drill down to operations and maintenance itself, it's made up of a combination of funds now. Going, again, going around clockwise, the stormwater fund funds $13 million of operations and maintenance, plus the $980,000 of inspections, which gives a total of $14 million. The remainder of the pie is covered by the general fund. And that was a strategy we used last year, so we can increase our bonding capabilities to increase our CIP, pretty much to focus on- to increase our CIP, pretty much to focus on flood control, but operations and maintenance did receive some additional CIP funding for that. Now, for accomplishments, I'll just drill down, give you the highlights that I see under pipe systems. We cleaned over 6,000, 60,000 linear feet of pipe last year. That was part of the neighborhood rehabilitation work that we do. Plus, it was part of us doing prep work prior to some hurricane events that were coming our way. We really beefed up our efforts to be ready for those hurricanes. We did complete rehabilitation in two neighborhoods, Thalia Wayside and Malibu. Under lakes and ponds, we completed 11 lake dredgings last year. We have 11 under design this year, and we anticipate starting at least one lake dredging this year. For canal programs, we created a new CIP canal project with this year's CIP. We plugged in 500,000. We already are spending that 500,000 on Lynn Haven Canal that is associated with the Eastern Shore Drive drainage work that we're starting also. Now, ditch work, we completed six ditches. Of those six, we completed the, I'll call it the Dam Neck Road ditches, and we completed the last portion of the Nider Ditch, which basically drains through Little Creek Navy Base and is the outfall for Lake Bradford, Lake Chub area. And that's pretty significant. Pump stations, that is one of our programs that's on target with respect to our maintenance cycle. Two big, odd things we are doing this year, we're rehabbing the Ocean Park Pump Station 2, which is right next to the Brock Center. And this year with the CIP, we got $4 million to make maintenance repairs to the four outfall pipes from the 42nd Street Pump Station. That includes interior work, plus installing flap gates at the end of the pipe, which is approximately 1,600 feet out into the ocean. For erosion and hurricane protection, that's the boardwalk seawall. We continue to maintain the stair nosings and the full-depth concrete joint repairs that you've seen us do out there. Maintenance, overall maintenance, we cleaned 463,000 linear feet of pipe. The biggest thing we're wrestling with, and you've heard about it, and we hear about it from the residents, we responded to 1,500 cave-in backfills. And what that is, is that's the call, when we get a call from a resident says, "There's a hole in the road, hole in my yard," we go out and say, "Yes, it's associated with the pipe underneath." We fill that hole for safety reasons. We come back, we generate a work order, the work order gets into the queue. And last year, we did approximately 942 cave-in repairs, okay? Of those cave-in repairs, 711 were done by city forces, 231 were performed by our contractor. And Philip will talk about, a little more detail about where we are with that backlog, and it is a significant backlog that we've talked about before. Street sweeping, we're on cycle. Our goal is to do six year, six street sweeps cycles a year. We have accomplished four. We picked out, up about 26,000 cubic yards of debris, which is essentially equivalent to six lake dredgings. Assume right now where we are, we're dredging about 4,000 cubic yards per lake, so that's how it equates there. We also are required by our stormwater VPDES permit to do inspections. We're on track to meet our requirements. We've inspected 3,000 stormwater facilities. We've inspected 339 lakes. And we also have to inspect our infrastructure, which we have performed 5,000 of those. Now, I will turn that over to Philip Cutter. He'll go into the individual stormwater programs. Philip?
Thank you, Mark. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you again. What you have here on the screen is the same programs that we have been concentrating on for the last few years in Public Works operations for stormwater. These are, these programs are a combination of funding source, are funded from a combination of sources from either the operating budget or the CIP. As Mark pointed out, we had about 13 million in our 10-703 Bureau Stormwater Fund. It funds primarily ditch work, pipe work, as far as in cave-ins, and the street sweep, well, the vac trucks and the pump station work. So that's where that goes. Oops, one too far. This slide, for some of you may recall, this is what we used to affectionately refer to as the brown map. It started back in the early 2000s, when we realized we were getting a lot of cave-ins in neighborhoods and we were spending a lot of time chasing things. So we started looking at our history of our cave-ins in our neighborhoods. First one that we started out with was Princess Anne Plaza. It started, like I said, in the early 2000s. Since then, we've refined the process significantly on how we prioritize and move forward with the program, with the rehab program. What you see up there are the listed steps, they're high-level for their current process. It includes the reviewing of the records, updating our mapping and our GIS. There's not a day goes by that I do not look at the stormwater mapping in the city and make corrections to it. It's an evolving item. We have over 1,100 miles of stormwater pipe, just to give you an idea, and we've refined that down significantly over the years. Once we get the mapping and everything squared away and we decide on the neighborhood we're going to do, we go into it, we do the clean and CCTV. Nine times out of 10, we add to our system at that point. It's an underground system, so a lot of times we don't know what all is tying into it till we get a camera in the pipe, and we're going down a 36-inch pipe, and we thought it was just one run, and all of a sudden, you've got a 24-inch pipe coming into it from one direction, a 12-inch pipe coming into it from another direction, which we were not aware of. So then we will upgrade our system, upgrade our mapping, and we'll continue on from there. It's very critical in getting our system correct. After we finish that up, we coordinate with our stormwater group. We want to make sure, if at all possible, if there's a simpler repair that we can do to prevent future flooding. Unfortunately, in a lot of the older neighborhoods, there are no simple repairs, otherwise we would have done them a long time ago. But we do coordinate with them, with our stormwater engineering and modeling group, and then we develop the repair plan so we can go into the neighborhood and do the major repairs. This is not making the system brand-new. It is not increasing or changing the design characteristics of that system. If it was designed for a two-year storm or a five-year storm, this is not going to make it designed for a 10-year storm. It's not going to bring it up to those current standards. That's something that we're looking at with the other stormwater engineering group. And then we go out and we make those repairs. Oh, I keep getting ahead of myself here, sorry. Ah, I got you. Okay, this is some of the metrics that we use to grade, that we've established to grade the neighborhood rehab program. I showed this to you before, but I just wanted to point out, what we're looking at is the before versus, pre-repair versus post-repair in those neighborhoods, comparing the number of flood calls that we received before, looking back in our system, which records go back into the mid-'90s, to the flood calls and for the cave-in calls. Our target is to reduce that by 50%. We feel like we've been pretty successful in that aspect. There are a couple of them that you will see up there that are not at 50%. Couple of the primary ones are the older systems, and they were done longer ago. Again, like I said, we did not fix every problem with the system, so some of those ones that were not as bad at the time, five, six, seven years ago, they're now starting to materialize and develop problems. So the cave-ins in some of those older neighborhoods are going up. And then some of the newer neighborhoods that you'll see, there was a flood, our flood control calls for Pine Ridge and Straw Bridge were excessively high. Well, there was a couple microbursts that happened a year or two ago in those neighborhoods where we had 100-plus-year storms, and it just happened to be in the fall, where there were a lot of leaf bags and other things in the street. And once those were removed from in front of the inlets, the water went away very quickly. Unfortunately, it was after the flood calls. Okay, like Mark said, cave-ins are one of our major, major problems. This particular photo is taken near 28th and Arctic, or 2800 Arctic, near the Harris Teeter. This particular system is one of the ones that we're requesting a separate funding and CIP for to do the repair. I told you all a couple weeks ago, this particular pipe system is a 90, around a 90-plus diameter system that goes out. I checked it earlier in the week. It drains about 50 acres of Arctic and Pacific Avenue and the areas down there. So this is a major outfall structure we need to get repaired. Unfortunately, stormwater systems in general are not watertight, and therefore, they're expected to have some water intrusion into them. We can't design them or build them watertight, it would just be cost prohibitive. But there are also other items, the material failures, site conditions, or constructibility techniques that lead to the cave-ins. In this particular case, a lot of this was corrugated metal pipe in this area, and as it got older, the saltwater just caused it to deteriorate. Like Mark also said, talking about the backlog, we currently have backlog of approximately eight months, and it's about over 800 cave-ins. We've been fairly consistent on maintaining that level for the last year or two. We just can't get beyond that. We can't reduce it more than eight months with the current level that we're attacking it with. We attack it with our in-house forces, and we do attack it with our CIP and our contract forces. Unfortunately, we use some of the funding that we get in our neighborhood CIP for this. We dedicate $1 million in that CIP directly to fixing cave-ins right now every year. Next program I wanted to talk about is the lakes and ponds. We've really come out of the gates hard on this one. Unfortunately, we still have that 95-year backlog or cycle time based off the amount of funding and the number of lakes that we have and the average cost that we use to dredge those particular lakes. We are doing well. We had projected out a few years ago a schedule on the top 50, on where we were going to, or tried to shoot for, for doing dredging. I'm happy to say we are on track, if not a little bit ahead, on that particular top 50, including some of the additional ones that we've put into the schedule due to the flooding in the Windsor Oaks area. So we are moving forward with that as quickly as we can with the resources and the funding that we have. Unfortunately, you know, without more resources and more funding, it won't go any quicker. The canal program is a relatively new program for us. In looking at that, we have 61 canals throughout the city that we designate as canals. It's approximately 50 miles worth of waterways. You're probably real familiar with the primary ones, Canal Number 2, Salem Canal, there's a variety of other ones, but they are, they're the arteries of the stormwater system. We've got to get the water to those, and then it goes out to the tributaries, either the Elizabeth River or the southern watersheds. So that particular CIP is started just a year or two ago. Unfortunately, it's not what we had wanted to fund for, but it is a start. Like Mark had indicated, we're working on Canal Number 2 work and on the Lynn Haven Canal. As far as that goes with Lynn, with Canal Number 2, Canal Number 2 is a federal project. We have to work with Army Corps of Engineers. Every three years, they come out and they do an inspection of that particular water structure and look at how we're maintaining it, and they tell us, or we look at it and tell them what we want to repair, and they either concur or tell us we need to do more. Next program, ditches. We've gotten such great success out of this. It may not be as far as, or quite up to the program that we want it to be yet, but when we started this back in FY12, FY13, started the planning on all this and then implementing it, and FY14, we targeted an eight-year cycle because trees grow, sediment builds up. We're shooting for a target. So we are in the seventh year of that particular program on an eight-year scheduled cycle. We don't think we're quite at that eight-year cycle. We think we're more in the 10- to 12-year range right now. Again, it's one of those that's limited by resources and funding. We do have a lot of promise with this, because we think whenever we go back on the second cycle or the third cycle, of course, it's going to be in that eight-year range, that it won't be as difficult to go in and do those cleanings. So we think we can be more efficient and hopefully get that up there. But again, that remains to be seen. And until you get through them all the first time, you really don't know exactly what you're dealing with. This is another one that, similar to the underground ditches, a lot of the, over 50% of those ditches are in the county, so some of those, we even still find new ones now. So as we find new ones, we have to add them into the system and get things working with that. With that, we had 152 miles that we used for the roadside, or for the off-road ditch program. We have over 500 miles of roadside ditches. So what I talked about in the previous presentation a couple weeks ago was the potential to establish a roadside ditch program also. We do have a roadside ditch crew. There are go-to guys for roadside ditches and anything else that comes up that we don't have a crew specifically there to handle. They may be tasked to go remove blockages from an inlet at a BMP, any number of other stormwater-related efforts that come up. So they are a jack-of-all, if you will, but their primary goal and focus is targeted on roadside ditches. So we're hoping that we can establish a program for that also. Pump stations, right now, this is our one that we think we're on cycle and on target with, with the current funding level. We are doing, averaging a major overhaul, one overhaul a year. The picture that you see there is the Ocean Park 2 stormwater pump station. We're doing a major overhaul of the entire pump station, replacing the pumps, the operating system, installing the new scada and everything, making it brand-new. That pump station, without that pump station, Ocean Park would not survive rainstorms very well. Ocean Park is in kind of a bowl over by the Lynn Haven inlet, and without this pump station, the water has nowhere to go. We've worked significantly in that area, reducing the backflow flowing in from the Lynn Haven, and this pump station makes sure they stay as dry as possible. Beach erosion and hurricane protection, this is another one of our federal projects. It's a very large project that included the Big Beach whenever that was installed, also includes the major pump stations at 16th and 42nd Street, and all of the supporting structure, infrastructure and ancillary equipment that is utilized to keep the oceanfront, the stormwater from the oceanfront piped out into the Atlantic Ocean. As Mark said, we have, actually, we have four pump stations that do that right now, but the two that are associated with the beach and hurricane protection are the 16th and 42nd, and the other two, 61st and 79th Street, they all pump water approximately 1,500 to 2,000 feet out into the Atlantic Ocean. So those items take significant maintenance. They're very large pump stations. Right now, they're our largest. As we move forward with the new pump stations, they're going to be bigger, and they're going to require additional maintenance. So as I mentioned earlier, as we bring those online, we will look at the maintenance requirements and the recommendations for overhauls, and we'll provide a recommendation for the additional funding for those. Street sweeping, we started this, we are in our fourth year of the contract with a street sweeper that does the major, or the, most of the roads throughout the city. Our in-house resources, we've dedicated to our town center, oceanfront, and then a case-by-case service request that may come up, a special call for sweeping in an area, and we'll do that with our in-house folks. As Mark pointed out, with the contract work, we've removed over 20,000, or over 26,000 cubic yards of material before it's entered the storm piping system or the BMPs that we have to pay again to remove that out.
Rosemary has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think the street sweeping is great. I think it could be really helpful if we could let the neighborhoods know when they're coming, because they don't move their cars, and the cars are on the street.
They don't move anything.
And then the sweeper comes along and they have to go around it, and they miss everything that's next between the car and the curb. And then that stuff is going to get down the drains too. So if there is some way we can alert the neighborhoods of when their streets are going to be swept, I think it'll be beneficial to- to be swept, I think it'll be beneficial to all of us. I don't know how impractical, but...
We are, the contractor, part of their contract, whenever we brought them online, was to have a website and a customer service feature. So they do have that, and they do present a schedule, and I think it's posted out on Nextdoor and a few other places.
The people don't know to go look.
On their website. And I guess that, you know, we have to figure out what's the best way to reach those, the people.
Not accurate either.
Yeah, if there's some way, because we're missing a whole lot of debris. And, I mean, I had citizens, you know, bring this to my attention and ask for it. If there's some kind of a way we can get the word out, the first Monday of every quarter, your street's going to be swept, or...
We can look at and see if we can push a little bit more of the information. Where we don't go to is where we post signs up and tell everybody, you know, one, you got more sign pollution in all your neighborhoods.
Right.
And then you're telling everybody, okay, you got to move your car, or we're going to tow you, or something like that.
Right.
Do not want to go there.
I didn't recommend that, but I think people want, you know, I was with some people in Windsor Woods, and they really want their debris picked up because they've got flooding issues.
We'll see if we can't push it out more.
But they said, we just don't know when the sweeper's coming along. And we'd like to move our car, but we just don't know when it is.
There's a notification process. You can receive an email, but it, we probably need to look at something a little more, perhaps some kind of outbound dialing system perhaps to tell people that, I mean, if you, they need to know the night before because they're not going to remember if you tell them, okay, it'll be two weeks from now.
You were right about that.
So maybe some kind of reverse dialing system, outbound dialing.
Yeah.
Jess?
I've been on their website. I've found that it's not terribly accurate, which I understand, but maybe if there's a way to ask them to have some kind of GPS on their truck so that you can see in real time where they're going and maybe anticipate where they might be with, along with some kind of scheduling system, that might be helpful. It's just a thought, but I think Rosemary is 100% right. I mean, I've seen it in my neighborhood because it's all street parking in my neighborhood, it feels like, so they just kind of come down and then they turn around, because there's not any curb to get to, and that's where the debris is.
Yeah.
Good points.
Thank you.
Good points.
Okay, the next program is our BMP Inspection and Spill Program. As you can see here, it's not, doesn't look like stormwater, and that's the thing we advertise, only stormwater down the storm drains. This particular program is, includes our 10 stormwater inspectors that go around and are required to inspect the BMPs. As we indicate here, we're required to inspect 100% of the public BMPs every year, and then we also do 20% of our system on average. So we have to do the entire system once every five years. Just to average it out, it works out to 20%. And then they do respond to spills as needed or as required. As we had indicated earlier, we responded to over 100 spills that, and what we're looking at with those are, those spills that we respond to are spills that have the potential to enter the storm drainage system. If there's something that's not, doesn't have the potential to go in the storm drainage system, typically, that's not something that this particular group would get involved with, but we will work with the Neighborhood and Housing Preservation or the other regulatory groups to make sure those get taken care of. BMP maintenance. This is another relatively new or another new program. We have a BMP dredging program, but that, all that is for is for removing the sediments out of the BMP. This particular program is for maintaining the public-owned BMPs. They may be a dry retention, dry detention, retention BMP. They may be another, one of the more, the new fancier types that go in the curb that you'll see that may have a bush or a tree planted in them. All of those require maintenance, and this particular BMP is, or this particular CIP is needed to provide that needed maintenance. Mosquito Control Program. This, they maintain the inventory of mosquito-controlled ditches whenever they're not spraying in the prime mosquito season. You know, a couple of us saw this slide, we don't, or this picture on the slide, we don't want Virginia Beach to have to post any of these types of slides. I believe this was from up in Alaska, just because of the, sorry, just because of the size of the mosquitoes. They do larva sighting in the prime season, and they spray. A lot of that is targeted. We have a mosquito-control biologist that works with interns and others over the summer to sample or to collect mosquitoes. So we do a very targeted approach on this. This is not reactive. This is a proactive program on both aspects, as far as where we spray, when it comes time to spray, and in the aspect of the mosquito-controlled ditches that these employees clean out during the off-season. Most of those mosquito-controlled ditches, what we'll look at are private ditches, they're not taking public water. This is more of a health issue that we're dealing with. This slide I presented for the first time at the last presentation a couple of weeks ago, it summarizes the programs that we have, well, not all of them, but the main CIP-funded programs. Shows you what our current funding level is, what our current, our current estimated cycle time is, and it follows up with our proposed cycle time for that particular program and the required additional funding for that. What we also show is if we can't, if funding limitations are such, if we want to reduce it by a portion of that, we tried to show that or at least present that so we can start the discussions on how much support and how much additional resources or funding we want to dedicate to these particular programs. Again, this one I talked a little bit about the last time, presents a couple of the new programs. One of the one new repairs at the Arctic Avenue BMP, or BMP pipe that goes by the Harris Teeter down at the oceanfront. Also, the Pinewood Canal Culvert, or Pinewood Culvert, that is one of the accesses to Bay Colony. Both of those are one-time repairs, $2 million for the Harris Teeter CIP outfall, or the drainage outfall, and a million dollars for the Pinewood project. The other additional funding that we have in there is what we had proposed the last couple of years is to assist us with whittling away at the large backlog in cave-ins that we have. We'd like to get it down to about a two-month backlog. With that, we'd need, we're estimating $9 million to take care of six months' worth of backlogs over two to three years so that we could get to approximately a two-month backlog, which is about what the capability of our in-house resources have been historically. Then the other one that you'll have, you see on there is the roadside ditch program that I talked about. Again, that's, we're looking at the possibility of seeing if there's additional, if there's any additional capability in the stormwater fund to fund these, or look at maybe reallocation of some of the flood control projects to support these. Wrapping up, as we had talked about, the last few years, we're really making great efforts to be more proactive with our maintenance efforts. Since I've been here for 14 years, we've initiated a number of these programs, from the pump stations to the neighborhoods to the ditch program. All these are more proactive. We're not waiting on the calls. Unfortunately, like the roadside ditch program we're talking about, that one is not reactive. That one is fully based off of calls from citizens, and that's why we're trying, we're thinking about implementing that particular program. We have a year of backlog ditches that, roadside ditches that people have called in. So we're really trying to focus on moving forward and being more proactive. Then it goes on to talk about the reduction in those backlogs and reducing those maintenance cycles, trying to be more responsive. It is very difficult when you're talking with a resident, telling them, it may be 95 years before I get to dredge your lake. That's not a conversation anybody enjoys having. Wanted to expand the canal maintenance. Again, right now, we've started funding that. That particular program will help us out in many aspects, and in past, we've had to fund that with other pennies that we could grab from lake maintenance or some other way just to do those particular maintenance efforts. So we're really happy that we're starting to fund that and moving forward with that. And then we also want to increase those rehab efforts of the neighborhoods. We want, one of the proposals that we're putting into our operating budget this year is additional, of additional VAC trucks so we can establish a proactive cleaning cycle in the neighborhoods. That's not something that we've had in the past. We're trying to be more proactive, want to get in the neighborhoods and try to flush them before they create a flooding problem and get a call from the residents that need assistance.
Okay, Jim, and then Rosemary. Yeah, Jess.
And thank you. I want to appreciate the fact that you all have been very proactive about providing these briefings over the last few years because I think frankly, this is very helpful information, whether it's for sea level rise or any of these other topics that are critical to us. But on the downside of that, I do have to mention, I don't know why this particular year it happened, but I got a number of complaints from citizens about the mosquito trucks missing the little red flags or ignoring the little red flags where people have put them out so that their property doesn't get sprayed. One guy was a beekeeper who called me. He was extraordinarily angry. And then there was frankly, a city employee called me, some other folks called me, and it was just this summer. It's the first time I've gotten this many calls, and I don't know if they're new people driving the trucks or contractors or what, but I would just say, when it kicks off next year again, when actively like that, I would strongly suggest that you all work on telling them to please look for the little red flags that...
All right. It sounds like a, I'll call it mosquito control season after action. So maybe I'll get a little more detailed information from you, and then we'll match it up to who was working those routes, and is there, is there a driver that's new or what happened? But I do know mosquito control, it's their program, and they want to keep that program up and running so they can have some harmony with the beekeepers throughout the city. So we'll work on that.
Rosemary?
Again, I agree with Jim. Thank you for the, these quarterly updates, and gosh, I think everybody around this table hears, you're not doing anything about flooding. There's nothing going on about flooding, and we know we are, and the problem is, is the public doesn't know what we're doing. I think it would be a really good idea where we're having, even in the design stage, to put signage out to say, CIP project, to let people know what's happening, because, and even once they start digging and stuff, people are like, oh, what's going on there? So I think if we could get signage of, because we are doing a lot all over the city, but we just need to communicate that to the public, and nothing's better than a sign where it's actually going to happen. So I would really like to see signage, not for, you know, small projects, but for the bigger projects.
I know, I know in past years, we used to, we called them the CIP project signs, and I'm sure I probably have a detail on that sign in my office somewhere. So we'll resurrect that and see if we can implement that throughout the city with our projects.
I think it'd be really helpful to let people know, yes, there is something coming, you know, it might be under design, it takes time, but it is coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Jess, John, Barb, and then Michael.
On Slide 8, it's a map of the cave-in. I have a question, kind of a curiosity. Is there a connection? It seems like some of the places, and I mean, I don't have the map right in front of me, but the one on the screen, the, it seems like, is there a connection to the age of the housing that's there, to the cave-ins?
I'll answer that. Partly. When we started talking about it in the early 2000s, you know, we saw this trend that was developing, just cave-ins everywhere. So initially, we thought that it was associated with, I'll call it pre, pre-60 subdivisions, because that's, they're the oldest, that's where you thought. But what we saw was, some of them had cave-ins and others did not. And then we would have relatively new subdivisions that had a lot of cave-ins. So what we did is we really looked at it, and what we found was, there were some older neighborhoods that had cave-ins, and that was probably due to, I'll call it, pipe failure, just old age of the infrastructure. We had, we had relatively new subdivisions that had cave-ins, which we suspected to constructability, construction techniques, because they were built in the boom-boom days of the subdivisions where this place was just exploding. And then we saw that we had probably subdivisions that had cave-ins as a result of the subsoil conditions that the neighborhood was just sitting on. Even though we put in, or the contractor at the time put in pipe bedding around the pipe, you would have settlement, and that would cause the pipes to shift, and we would have cave-ins. So the map was kind of built on those three things, and you would see, you would think you'd have a good trend there, the old neighborhoods, but then all of a sudden, you see a new, relatively new neighborhood that you would not expect to see cave-ins, and you would have cave-ins.
Well, that was kind of why, because I was curious about, here in the western part of the city, I was trying to figure out where each of those kind of orange spots were located, and I thought that one was kind of newer-ish, not, I mean, maybe 80s or 90s.
I'll say, one of them is Windsor Woods. I'm not Windsor Woods, Salem Woods.
Yeah, well, I think that was the 80s, wasn't it?
Correct. And you would go, why is it there?
Well, and that was what I was curious about, and so what, follow-up to that, is there like a lessons learned? We found that, okay, this kind of construction will result in cave-ins, or are we maybe not that far in analyzing what's happening, or...
Over time, I think what we've done is we've beefed up our Polyworks Design Standards, which Plan Department uses when they review subdivisions, and Planning has beefed up their inspection efforts. And so we've learned lessons as we went through that time period where we had all that rapid development.
Great. And I have one other question, kind of in the same vein of trying to keep debris out of the drains, and this is just a question I get asked everywhere I go. What can we do about people putting their debris purposely in the drain? I realize that's probably a reinforcement nightmare. But I get a lot of complaints about particularly, like landscaping companies.
Give us a call. Somebody just tell us who it is and how we approach that. We treat it as an illicit discharge, meaning stuff going down a storm drain that's not supposed to. And one of our BMP inspectors will make contact to them, do some awareness and say, I just want to let you know, there is a city ordinance, and it's the Storm Sewer System Discharge Ordinance, which says only stormwater can go into the storm drain, with the exception of a few things. So we, basically, we know who you are now, we're going to keep an eye on you, and we've told you about it. If you, if you keep on doing it, we're going to, we're going to get serious about it. And we have gotten serious with individuals in the past.
I just know, that's every civic league I go to, they're like, so-and-so has someone doing their yard, and that person just takes their blower and...
So you do need to ask, are they, are they reporting it at that minute? We have to catch the person pretty much doing it at that time, so...
Well, I think there, I think, and rightfully so, there are concerns with confronting somebody about their action, and then you, then there's also like that weird where you're like, should I sit here with my phone and like, somebody?
We do not have a problem, our BMP inspectors, environmental inspectors, do not have a problem contacting a business or a homeowner. I mean, we're doing it, like I say, first round, we come in, and it's a public education thing, and if it disintegrates from that point, we take whatever necessary reaction to meet that level of response.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
John?
Well, certainly while we are doing a lot, we could be doing more, and we're late to the threat and to the backlog. So while we are doing a lot, we should be doing a lot more, and we chose consciously not to. But one of the things, and I've talked with the city manager about this, when you're trying to talk to the public and talk to these programs, this presentation is great for us, but it doesn't tell people what they're buying. You know, I know we have four watersheds, and we have 31 drainage systems, I think, something like that, 31 or so.
Yes.
So when you look at this as a system of systems, I can't look and say, I'm now in the southern watershed, for example, or the Elizabeth River, and say, okay, here it is, and here's what the current performance of my system is under the conditions that we think we're going to experience, the new ones. we think we're going to experience, the new ones. And we say, okay, here's how it's currently performing, red, green, yellow, you know, purple, whatever, and when we do these things, these targeted things, this is the material improvement you're, we're going to see in this drainage system. Because in the end, what we're doing is we're buying down the risk, not preventing flooding. And I won't say we're preventing flooding, that's a bad thing to say, but we're mitigating the risk. And you can't understand from this, all these are good projects, but you can't grasp what it is the risk I'm reducing, and what it means to me as a homeowner, because this isn't going to be done without any new money, let's be honest with that, it's going to take new money, hopefully, some reprogrammed money, that's my hope, so a little bit of both. But people want to know what they're getting for their money, and what it translates to them, and ultimately, somewhere down the stream, where would it change our FEMA flood ratings? Because we all know the flood insurance rates are going to be going up at an increasing rate, we've been, that's just going to be a reality. And so, it's pay this, or increase your risk of flooding and still be paying. I'm just trying to figure out the, the communication and the marketing strategy, depending on the point, Rosemary's kind of making, but we don't, we don't do a good job of talking to how the resident sees it when they got to pay the bill. And I, and I think this is a little, little abstract for them to understand what they're getting in terms of risk reduction. But I have other couple of micro questions, not just a comment, but if we go on to the slide six, I heard you mention several times that we were doing a major overhaul and rehabilitation of this pump station at Ocean Park, and I assume that's extending its, its service life, but not its original capacity, correct?
Uh, correct. It does not, the capacity of the pump station is good.
I know, I said, but it's maintaining, but we're just...
We're just maintaining, we're upgrading technology in it, and we're upgrading some of the operating system.
But we're extending the useful life?
Yes, we are.
I'm just surprised that that wouldn't be a CIP item, because usually, if you're extending the life of a capability, that's a capital improvement, versus maintaining the life and you're doing maintenance.
Uh, we, in, in operations and maintenance, we have CIP projects that do, do extend life, and we do have some, some money that we, we do, I'll call it the daily day maintenance.
What we want to ask, because we're getting ready to make a lot of installing these type of pump stations, right? And there's a life cycle cost. There's an overhaul life cycle part, and that's regular maintenance, then there's what I would call depot level maintenance, and then there's replacement. But generally speaking, a depot level maintenance, which is extending the life, and maybe, generally is a capital expenditure, if you're in business, that'd be a capital expenditure, not operation expense, and if we're doing these, we should be thinking about our recurring CIP and accounting for, and seeing on a life cycle basis, because we get a lot of pump stations.
We're going to get more.
Right. And so, I think the council would like to know just what that future bill is, so as you're making obligations, you understand that before you build something new, make sure you can afford to maintain what you own. That's the kind of principle I'm getting to, and you don't see that on this kind of piecemeal thing, you'd lose that vantage point. And that's just an observation, you talked about the close-in. On the lake inspections, do, when we say we inspect the lake, is that for water quality? Is that for the level of sedimentation and lost capacity? What is a lake inspection?
Uh, it's the, the depth of the, it's sedimentation. We, we go in, we, we check the depth of the water, we check the depth of the sediment at the bottom, we try and find the original bottom, so we're pushing through mud to get that. We are inspecting the shoreline, we're expecting the pipe outfall systems that drain into the lake, and the discharge point from, from the lake, so...
So, when you complete the annual inspections of the city system, and you, do we re-baseline in our GIS systems, as you just said, all this data's in our modeling system, and then do we update the performance of our drainage system based on all those changed parameters, and get a better understanding now of what the degradation in performance is, or if it's improved or declined?
Where we see a significant change, we will go to our, our models, and we will check the, the model data, and see how far we're off, and if we're significantly off, we will make changes to reflect the current sta, state.
My only suggestion to this body is, since we, this is such a big issue, we're always asked about it everywhere I go, about you, but I'm asked about it everywhere, and we spend a lot of money on this multi-layered GIS database and this modeling system, and if it's that laborious, I just think we got to have an annual understanding of each of the watersheds, drainage capacity and performance, and then of the subsystems, so that we understand what impact we're having, and where to put the next best dollar to get the next best improvement.
I think we're getting close to giving that to you.
Okay. Well, I'll be happy as you can be, and I only think I had, about the canals, I asked about that, about the backlog, you talked about that. Now, the roadside, if, looking at that backlog, if we were trying to, and I'm not saying that we would, but if we had, is there sufficient private sector capacity, that if we had the will, if we had ending fund balance money, since that's a one-time catch-up, is that, does the private sector capacity exist, allow us to compress that maintenance into a shorter period of time? So, rather than over three years, we could do it in two, or maybe even do it in one? And then, understanding what we gain when we get that, because that's the value proposition of money, but is the private sector capacity there to do that?
On the roadside ditches?
Yes.
I would say yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Barbara, then Michael.
We all have such a big expanse of duties, that it does get confusing for all of us, because, you know, we do mix up CIP, we mix up operation and maintenance, we mix up flooding from storm water, and it's all hard to keep straight. So, I just need to clarify in my own mind, some of these things. I think there's, there's a, a big confusion between backlog and cycle. Right? The cycle is what we're trying to get to, because we're not going to do everything every year. So, to say you've got a 12-year cycle, doesn't mean that's a backlog. That means that, if that's what your goal is, you're just trying to get to it every 12 years. And so, I think, I think in some people's mind, a cycle is a backlog, or a backlog is a cycle, and we really do need to make sure people understand that this is. In looking at the ditch systems, this off-road ditch project, that's the one, I guess, if we did this in fiscal year 14, that's seven years ago, that was the year we, we hired an additional ditch crew, or we, so we had two, now we have two ditch crews. And every year, they do one in the northern part of the city, and we've got these little A, B, C, D, E, F quadrants. Every year, they do one in the northern part of the city, and one in the southern part of the city. So, now, in this year, we've got one more year, and we will have completed this cycle, and then you just start it over again. This is the off-road ditch.
Correct.
And that's different from the roadside ditch.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is different from the mosquito control ditches.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, when people say, my ditch hasn't been cleaned out in X number of years, we have to say, well, which ditch is it? And it really does get confusing to folks and so forth, so just to kind of make sure I'm, I'm thinking in the, in the right terms. So, this ditch crew thing, they are off-road ditches.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're still trying to identify all of those, particularly the southern part of the city, I think, just, just so...
Yes, ma'am, we are, and...
We're getting there, though.
We, we are getting there, we're making progress, we're not, we're not making as, I'll call it, as fast a progress with the off-road ditches, which to me, are the most important ditches of all, because they typically are, go unnoticed, they're in somebody's backyard over the fence, and they usually carry, you know, several subdivisions worth of storm water to an outfall point, to one of waters of the US. And those are the critical ones, we really need to go after, because when the big rain comes, they're the ones we're going to look at to provide the most relief.
Off-road ditches are different from canals, which are, so we almost kind of need to have a, a...
Definitions?
Official map of what everything really is, and everything's getting to outfalls. But I'm, I'm really trying to do something, as I've talked with some of you, with, with the folks in the Princess Anne District, i.e. southern watershed, that every neighborhood knows...
Right.
Where their water goes, because I think that's so important for people to know what kind of water it is, and so forth. So, one other point, just for my clarification too, the street sweeping, didn't we, aren't we doing that as a part of our attempt to make sure we're meeting our Chesapeake Bay regulations? I mean, we, we found out that that would count toward that, isn't that?
Yes.
And is it working?
Uh, yes, we are taking credit for it.
And so, this first round of what we had to do to meet the certain TMDLs, or whatever it was that we had to do, this was a big component of our being able to meet that, right?
It was one of them, yes, ma'am.
And so, we, we are paying for that with a part of our storm water fee, or?
We are now paying for that through the general fund.
Through the general, that's another thing that I think would help, would help me, and also help us answer questions to people a lot, if we could sort of have a little cheat sheet of where the money, whether it's the storm water fee, whether it's the general fund, whether it's that one penny we added, or just how we're paying for each of these things, because y'all do a lot of work that you don't get credit for.
We had a sense that, that, since we, we moved storm water funded budget units into the general fund last year, we had a sense that that would probably be a question coming up this year, is, okay, who, who's, who is now funded, or what is now funded by the storm water utility fund, and what is funded by the general fund? So, we, we'll get a, we'll get an eight and a half by 11 sheet, that'll, that'll show, show that, so we can do that.
Okay, very good, thank you, just to keep it straight.
Hey, Michael.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm grateful for the update as well. And I, the question I have is about the balance between operation and maintenance and the investment in flood control projects. And when I'm in the community, as has been noted, this is the question that I'm, that we're asked most frequently, is about flooding. And the question specifically about flooding that I'm asked most frequently about is about maintenance. And there's a perception in the, in the city, and including among many of my neighbors, that the maintenance has been neglected, either for whatever reason, for a variety of reasons, lack of resources, or, or otherwise, that, that there has been some neglect as it relates to the, the maintenance of the systems. And I think that there's a sense among many people, many neighbors I talk to, that they would be, while not satisfied, they would be happy if the existing systems were just, were just working. That that would be a great first start. But I don't see the operations and maintenance, the allocation of, of resources is, is less than in, in flood control projects. And so, I'm, and, and that's, I guess my question is, are you comfortable with the current balance? Because as, as Barbara mentioned, there's a lot of areas where you don't get credit for, and I think a big part of that is that a lot of the public isn't aware of the impacts that, that projects that are under design and permit will have on the storm water
Okay.
Landscape. But I, I think, if I could just finish, I think that people are particularly interested in that discussion about balance. We've had it, we've had some discussions here about that ratio, and I'm just wondering if, if you have any insight on that, or if...
Sure. Okay. We, we always try to achieve a balance based on what, I'll call it, the need is at, at the time, and I want to say the time, say a five-year span. And I think it was, I was looking at the chart, on the ERU rate increases, I think around 2014 or so, we, we increased the storm water utility ERU rate. When we did it, I believe, for four years, and the majority of that rate increase went to maintenance. So, maintenance was actually receiving, or had a higher percentage of funds coming to maintenance than flood control. Flood control projects were pretty low, at the same time, we had a big push to get our water quality program going. So, it was, it was, maintenance got the largest percentage, followed by flood control, and then followed by storm water quality. Due to the past events, starting with Matthew, the big push was flood control projects. And we've been talking about that. So, the latest fee increase pretty much went to flood control, but some of the money, some of the money did go to maintenance, we tried to go for a balance, and some of it went to water quality. The slide, if you go to, was it slide 22? Amber, thank you. What we're trying to do, you know, based on what we've heard from city council, we've heard from the public and everything, staying within the approved storm water fee increases over the next six years, including this year, we are trying to do a little bit of rebalancing so we can start programs. What I'm doing here is, I'm taking $5 million from the flood control program, and I'm proposing to put it in the maintenance program, so we can go after that backlog, which is just a backlog, it's not a maintenance cycle, of the, the cave-ins, and, and get rid of that eight-month cycle, eight-month backlog, and get it to a two-month backlog. That's where we want to be, or we feel we can handle a two-month backlog. We know we're reactive in the roadside ditch program, so we want to put funding in the CIP to hire a contractor to start going after our roadside ditch, ditches, and FY '22, we propose a million dollars, '23, $2 million, and then we'll be up to $5 million in '24 and '25. So, that's how we're proposing to go after, after the roadside ditch program. So, we're, we really want to go after those two programs right now, along with some of the, just one, one, or two of the projects, what we know we really need to go after, is that culvert on, was it Pinewood? We've been patching that for several years, but we really need to do something in that 92-inch corrugated metal pipe, and it's in an easement, but it's under the park, and a lot of the Harris teeter down at the beach, we need to do something with that. So, we're already trying to adjust, and we try and look and adjust, and balance out the maintenance needs with the flood control needs, with the water quality needs, every CIP, every budget year.
Can I just have a quick follow-up to that? Please, go ahead, though.
Well, go back to chart 21, and this may, so I think what Councilman Berlucis, if you look at CIP 7087, that is your neighborhood rehab.
Right.
Okay, that does about one neighborhood a year, and you think about our hundreds of neighborhoods, there's the problem, and your, your own chart shows, the largest shortfall you're showing is eight and a half million per year, to go in and clean TV, and make all the spot repairs that you, you know, what we call find and fix in the neighborhoods. And you showed the chart that showed the pretty amazing improvements after you've done that, just getting the neighborhoods back to close what they were when they were first built, even if they're not, even if we haven't placed any pipes, but at least they're all working as good as they were when they first built. And that, you're correct, that is where we're, that's where we're...
Yeah, and I know in, in a couple more meetings, we're going to talk about potential bond referendum. Part of that, we're probably going to look at the balance between flood control projects, maintenance and water quality also, so we can get, get the overall program going in the direction that everybody wants to see the program going to.
I could just offer the follow-up, I think there's a, quite a bit of misinformation, as Mrs. Henley noted, about, about maintenance in our city, and I don't know if it would be appropriate, or, or when, but as discussions, public discourse about this, maybe there's ways we could, we could share more information with the public about the different types of ditches, and maybe discourage people from jumping to conclusions when they haven't seen activity around a ditch, or, or maybe reach out to you if they have questions about, about the areas that are near their home, so that we can answer them accurately and, and be as transparent as possible.
We can do that, and if there's a specific civic league that would like us to come see them and show them, you know, we can, we can bring them a map, showing, showing the subdivision, where it drains to, what maintenance issues we have done, what maintenance issues we are planning to do, and we're getting, you know, from our, our storm water master plan modeling effort, we probably can generate some maps there also, that will get to the performance of that system.
Okay, Barbara.
One more clarification. When you say flood control, are we talking about storm water or tidal? I mean, they're two entirely different things, and I think the people see, mix that up, too. I mean, we're usually talking about stormwater when you're talking about flood control with these projects, because of this maintenance. We're not really getting into the tidal stuff. And, I mean, when you're looking at water, I mean, is it stormwater or is it tidewater? Of course, we really get into a mess with that down in the southern part of the city, because you just really don't, I mean, so it's just really hard for everybody to keep it all straight.
That, that is true.
But flood control, you're, we're really thinking stormwater, right?
We're thinking stormwater, but, we're thinking stormwater, but in the conversation, we will talk about tailwater, which could be tidal. Like Windsor, Windsor Woods, there's a, there's a flood control, stormwater flood control component, and there's a tidal component. And the same with Princess Anne Plaza.
John?
I was just going to add, following up on, on Mr. Berluci's comments. I don't know whether it's in the budget, I don't, and I certainly don't want to burden the folks that are doing the work with it. But, boy, I think some outreach of the type we have in leading up to a bond referendum in particular, you really do need, you know, some really good dog and pony shows that let people know. Nothing like this idea of showing a neighborhood where their neighborhood drains and where it is, and letting them give some feedback on where they see problems. I just don't think there's anything that compares to that in terms of getting the public educated and feeling like, you know, we're making progress. So I think not just waiting for a civic league to ask, but having some kind of program where we're doing outreach and trying to meet them where they are, so to speak.
Sabrina?
I was just listening to how you were articulating, how you kind of focus on different priorities, whether it's flooding, water quality, and there was one other area you mentioned.
Operations and maintenance.
The maintenance. Which, which, and I, and it sounds like it-
Sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
Sorry, I did. But I think, from what I'm hearing, is that as different times, priorities shift. So my question is, are you getting, or is the staff getting a concerted or consistent direction from council? And if, and if you are, that direction that you're getting, is it causing you to shift your priorities to where we're not really making an impact on the areas we need to make an impact?
I'll answer that. No, we're getting consistent message from council. You know, like I said, in the mid-2000s, council approved a fee increase, which pretty much was going to maintenance at that time, because maintenance needed a boost. Now, we need a boost in flood control. We, we're pushing all three components forward at the same time, and we're matching up, you know, based on the funds that we have, we're matching up how to, how to keep all three programs moving forward and, and hitting the milestones we need to hit, so, you know.
So there is consistency to where there will be impact, I guess, an obvious impact that we will see. Because a lot of times, if there's no consistency, you don't see the projected impact that you're looking for.
You're going to see, you're, let me answer, answer it this way. You're going to see progress, steady progress in stormwater quality and regulatory by us meeting the conditions of our permit. You're going to see progress with operations and maintenance, where, you know, we're getting better each year of implementing our programs. So you're seeing forward movement there. We have some, some spots where we, where we need to inject some money. And like Mr. Leahy said, if you really could pump a little more money into neighborhood rehab, that'll go a long way. At the same time, we are funding the big flood control projects, because we got, if you don't start funding them now, you're never going to get them funded, and you're never going to get them done. So we're funding those, we're designing, we're moving out. This year, we've, we're, we have one, one of the first phases of eastern shore drive drainage under construction. So we're, we're making progress. If you get more money injected into the program, we will look and distribute that among the three programs and keep them all moving forward. It's, it's about funding levels, and we should tell you how fast you're going to be able to go.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you all very much, moving in the right direction. Okay, City Council Liaison reports.
If I might.
Yes.
So it's, it's 5:00 now, and normally, in the next three items, you'd take about 30 minutes. And we somehow, the best-laid plans of ice and men, we were hoping you'd have a full hour for the next three minutes, because we're trying to get you more time for discussion. But I think we still have to go to the exec session at 5:30. So it may be because the stormwater took a little bit longer than we thought, so.
Yeah, that was, you know, one important thing, okay?
But we are trying to get you more time.
Okay, but, but, you know, let's just, if we can, get through, Council Liaison reports? John?
This is just for the Community Development Corporation, they did it last Wednesday, I guess it was. They are making progress, they're staying on, on their budget. They still need to sell that property in Chesapeake, they've got the closure, they hope to do that soon. And they'll be sending us a report on all the items in the audit, so we'll be seeing that in a letter from the board to us, so you can see the progress that they're making. And we soon, soon should have the results of the audit, you know, we're getting from the state. It's going to help them out to audit the physical condition of the 400 and something housing units that they own. So we should have that, and that should be the next thing in that, the cause of, be a source of discussion when we have that. But that's the next big event you're going to see is that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, Sabrina?
I just have more, I guess it's more of a comment for Vision 2040. I understand, and I've been getting some feedback from them, that they've been asked to kind of go out to the community and get feedback on the survey, on the comprehensive survey for the plan, comprehensive plan, and get this, and the survey. And so I'm hearing that there, there's some negativity as far as them, when they're reaching out to the community, they're getting some feedback from some individuals that's make, it makes it difficult for them to, you know, do their job that we've asked them to do. And so I just want, you know, and it's, say, for instance, on Facebook, they may be saying to residents and citizens, you know, let's get the survey done, can you complete the survey? And then they get that negative feedback, you know, as to, well, they get some negative feedback in trying to move forward.
Right.
So they're getting that, and then I just want to make sure that, number one, we emphasize that this is what we asked them to do. And so from what I'm understanding, they're getting some negative feedback from certain factions, maybe certain groups. And just want to put that out there, that this is something we have asked that they do. And, you know, want to just kind of be supportive to what they're doing, what we've asked them to do.
Now, we really appreciate their, you know, trying to do that, and, you know, in the public, you know, domain these days, there at times is going to be negative feedback, but hopefully, the positive feedback will overcome that, you know.
I have posted on Facebook, I'll be right up front, telling people this is their opportunity. If they don't like the current comp plan in terms of high density, in terms of the SGAs, this is their time to make their voice heard. That's not negative about the survey, it's letting people know silence is consent. So if you don't like the current direction, this is your opportunity to speak up. And I will continue to encourage people to speak up, because I didn't vote for and don't agree with the current comp plan.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that, and I don't, I don't know what you said, I haven't seen your Facebook posting. But I just want to make sure we're mindful that we've asked them to take on this effort, and we should be as supportive as we can.
I'm not sure I understand.
That was timely. Jess?
Are we on Council Comments or Liaison?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, okay, we're, we're in Council Comments now? Okay, Comments?
I have a lot of things, so I want to be quick. I'm passing around an ordinance to dedicate 25% of the dome site revenue to stormwater. Of course, this is kind of timely, since this would hopefully be a companion piece to our vote on the dome next Tuesday. It's pretty straightforward, I'd love feedback, anybody who wants to jump on this, questions, I'm open to suggestions. Felt like 25% was a good number. I have, I have four items I'm going to pass out, so if anybody got anything on this.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Okay. Second, and Tom Leahy and I had a meeting about this on, I don't know, a couple weeks ago. I asked him to look into this potential, potential stormwater fee reduction program. I was on a conference call with the National Flood Insurance Program a couple weeks ago, and I was surprised, not really surprised, it was kind of neat to hear them using Nor, holding Norfolk up as a great example of some things they've done for flooding and ways that they've done outreach for educational purposes to their community, and one of which that they specifically mentioned up was, mentioned was the fee reduction program, which they've implemented in Norfolk, and it basically talks about things that homeowners can do to their properties in order to reduce their, their bills, so to speak. And basically, what this ordinance does, or resolution does, is ask the city manager to formally put a project together and report back to us a recommendation. So it doesn't actually establish the program, but asks that we, yeah, I just have a color version in case anybody wanted the fancier version. I don't, I, I would like to try to bring this before the end of the year. I'm not planning on bringing this next Tuesday by any means, but I wanted to give everybody a chance to look over it and give feedback, join the resolution. It's the same thing, I have a color copy and a, and a black and white. This one's not a surprise, I've already brought it forward once, but I've made a couple tweaks with the help of staff. This is just the district ref, district voting referendum that I've asked to be placed. Again, I'm not bringing this next Tuesday, but do plan to do, do plan to bring it before the end of the year. And then the last one, hopefully, not a surprise. It is a resolution to create a urban agricultural advisory committee with the purpose of making recommendation to traditionally agricultural uses around the city, most commonly chickens, pigs. I've also been asked to talk, to discuss the possibilities of a city compost program as well. And I felt that perhaps bringing a formal ad hoc committee to the city to review and make recommendations would be the easiest way to streamline that process. So the only one I'm asking us to consider next Tuesday is the dome site dedicated stormwater resolution. But the other ones are ones I do plan to bring, so, and I didn't want to take up too much time. But if there's any questions, I'd have to be answered on.
On the dome site revenue, I mean, a lot of this is still only for all of us. Has there been any discussion of where that revenue is to be dedicated?
Well, if I recall, when you got the presentations-
Schools and the general fund.
Right, right, and you got the presentation, it was, I think there was about $8 million net per year. Some went to schools, some went to the general fund, and some went back to the tip fund, if I'm not mistaken. And this would be, it would be a substantial part of that, but we can show you those numbers.
Yeah, John?
I'd only suggest on that topic, we first have a good baseline of what the baseline revenues forecast are, because if our baseline revenues fall below our forecast, then obviously, those increased revenues are not really net ever news over what's expected, and we would then be cutting baseline programs. We just need to understand that you've got to have two pieces to that, just to make sure that you, it isn't physically irresponsible. You've got baseline forecasts you've got to live with as well.
Okay.
We all want more money for stormwater, I just didn't know, because we really hadn't talked about the expected revenues and what would happen with them, other than-
He produced until it's all built and operated.
Right, and other than schools was going to get a certain portion in the general side.
That's not coming for a few years.
Okay, okay, Jim then, John?
Is there, since, since we won't be collecting any money on this anytime soon, is there, is there a magic reason why it has to be next Tuesday?
Well, I, I think it would aid in our positive outreach to the community for them to understand that we're committed to putting this revenue somewhere.
I'm just saying it would be good to, to maybe do outreach first on this, and we don't really have much time to, to see, because I, I mean, I, I don't disagree that we need to spend money on it, but I think it's, it's probably something that may, may go beyond Tuesday, especially since it's going to be years before there's any revenue coming on this.
Well, I think we could make an amendment, I couldn't vote for it, to the basic motion that says what council's intentions are, rather than having, rather than being prescriptive on the actual fiscal formula that you would make the distribution, that would apply to everything, so people wouldn't have a false expectation without a great public debate, with which there's been none. That's just an idea.
Okay, but John?
I just want to bring this to your attention, it's budget season, and next year is a five-year forecast, and many of you got this in your packet at my request, there was a big publication in the Washington Post about national figures, and then there was how it applies to Virginia Beach. Well, the national average wage is $23.70. The hourly average wage in Virginia Beach is $20.50. That's $6,700 a year difference in a, in a worker's pocket. But what makes that really interesting is that while our labor, average hourly wage is 86.5% of the national average, our cost of living is 110, 118%. So we're 18% above the national average on cost of living, and we're 86.5%, with the index being 100, being the average, on average wage. And what the implications that is, we have to be mindful across all our appetites of just what the fiscal capacity of households are to do things, even though we all like to do everything. These are indications that they are already are under, the average family and the median family even more so, because skewed, is under tremendous pressure. So we need to be very careful about regressive taxes and fees, and other things of what the offsets are, because people, despite all the macroeconomic statistics, it isn't applying at the household level, and that's where we raise our revenue, just to be mindful of that fact.
Okay, anybody else? All right, I'm going to be passing something out for consideration for next week, and it's a resolution to reestablish the Citizens Committee on Boards and Commissions. Process Improvement has been working on this for a while, we'd like to take it to the next step. And obviously, you know, we reach a time where, given the magnitude of the boards and importance we have with the boards and commissions, that we get some public involvement in things. So basically, is to establish a Citizens Committee on Boards and Commissions. They would serve in advisory capacity to the city council and shall appoint its members. The committee shall consist of 11 members and include residents who have served on boards and commissions. And the staff support shall include with the city clerk's office, volunteer services. And also, we would include a member of the Process Improvement Steering Committee. Okay.
Is this for each of us to, since there's 11 people, each of us is to bring forward any?
Make an appointment, yeah.
More clear on what they're going to do?
Well, I think that, once again, it states that, back in 2003, there was a Citizens Board that made recommendations regarding-
Reba and I were on it yesterday.
Yep, you, you and Reba were on that back then, regarding all aspects of the city's boards and commissions.
Do you feel like there's zero base review, things that need to go away, or?
Yeah, it would do, it would do a thorough analysis of maybe redundancies and, you know, things that have become obsolete over time, the actual process itself, and, you know, just things of this neighbor, nature to give, you know, public input, and it would make the life of the city clerk, you know, because, once again, it's a process that, you know, I really just think needs updating, okay? So, for consideration next week. Okay, at this point, how about agenda review? Oh, okay. This is an updated version.
Item K2.
A item K2 regarding the, providing funding for beach recovery for events. The, one in the, you know, the current package was based on it. Bob Mathias, can you just give us an update necessitating this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we had developed this resolution with the expectation the General Assembly would go back into the special session on the 18th and address the bill put in by Delegate Knight that would fund $10 million in cash and a $20 million no-interest loan. They have basically punted the special session, they're going to meet and approach- They have basically punted the special session, they're going to meet in a pro forma meeting, so there will not be a special session. So in order to keep this initiative going, we changed it to request that the governor put it in his budget, which comes out December 14th, and I suspect it's 98% done, and failing that for the General Assembly to add it, excuse me, in January. And they'll have the November, December, and January revenue reports when they finish the budget up, and the expectation is they're going to have a fairly substantial amount of additional money. In spite of the fact, they're also going to have fairly substantial additional costs with Medicaid, re-indexing the standards of quality and things like that.
So, you know, basically, it's necessitated by the fact that we're not having, you know, the meeting as stipulated in the original resolution in our package. This is an alternative. Okay, Mr. Wood?
Okay, under ordinances and resolutions, we have speakers on item K3. We also have additionally single speakers, as we do every week on some of these items, but, but we were going to handle those separately. So under, under ordinances and resolutions, if there's anything that people want to know on, want to have pulled, other than item three, which is being pulled. Okay? And under planning, both items have speakers on them, so they, they will have to be heard.
All of them?
Okay, we're done. Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting as allowed by Section 2.23711A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purpose. Public contract, discussions of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussing the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237A29, and that's regard to our executive search firm selection. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice from such counsel pursuant to Section 2.237A8, the suit Delora versus Bright, Brent, and personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237A1. Counsel appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, okay. Roll call.
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Ralph?
Aye.
Mr. Berluci?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Mr. Bluton?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Dr. Irwin?
Aye.
Okay, aye. Let's recess into executive, but let, five-minute break.